7th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. I will call this meeting to order in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20, in accordance with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022. I announce that this meeting of the Select Board is being recorded by Hadley Media and Zoom. And ask if there is anyone present who is also recording this meeting. Then say if no one is recording, let the minutes reflect that nobody else has indicated that they are recording this meeting. Executive session has been canceled tonight, so we will move to open session. It will be brought up at another meeting. We will go to...
Public comments?
Public comments. Is there anybody here on Zoom for public comments? Don't see anybody, Jane.
Can we see everybody from here?
Is there anybody on?
Amy.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we have any hands raised.
We have a consent agenda. And we have warrants AP 2307, AP 307S, AP 2310V, AP 23095, AP 239, AP 238S, and AP 2308. We also have a special one-day alcohol license wine and malt for Leadfoot Brewing. And as I understand, we want to take that out for discussion. Is that correct?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we won't vote on that right now. We have a special one-day alcohol license wine and malt, Jenny Lynn Fontaine from UMass Amherst TOC, Inc., at six concourse concession areas in McGurk Stadium on September 17th, October 8th, 15th, and 29th, and November 26th.
Do we have to take that one out, too?
Do we?
I don't know, do we?
No, no, there's just an issue that I want to talk about with the first one.
Special one-day alcohol license wine and malt, Jenny Lynn Fontaine, UMass Amherst TOC, Inc., at the South End Zone, South Hospitality Plaza and McGurk Stadium on September 17th, October 8th, 15th, and 29th, and November 26th. We have an automatic amusement device license amendment. Is that being taken off, or is that still on?
That's still on.
That's still on. Fun Hub LLC, DBA, Fun Hub Action Park, 367 Russell Street, Unit H-06, amend license to add six devices from 25 devices to 31 devices.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of the one item that's been pulled up for discussion.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of those?
Well, I mean, should we ask for any discussion on that?
You can have discussion.
We can or can't?
You can.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Because the, excuse me, the other two for UMass don't have times on it. Does that matter?
It's during games.
During the games, the games that day.
I don't see any attachments on here.
Yeah.
That was still?
I can provide them.
Okay. No, that's fine. I just, one was a little more specific than the other.
Correct.
Okay. I don't care, that's fine. Let them sell.
And any other discussion on that?
So we hear this is scheduled. Let me just tell us when these times are and the locations are there.
Okay.
All those in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will discuss the Leadfoot Brewing LLC at Maple Valley Creamery, 102 Millie Valley Road, looking for September 11th, 18th, and 25th from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m., and on September 21st from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
So the reason I wanted this out is not necessarily because it's Leadfoot Brewing at Maple Valley Creamery. It's just the more that I get involved with these things, the more I learn that it feels like we, at least definitely me, do not understand this process completely. And Jane was talking yesterday at the Tuesday meeting of the building inspector and everybody about all kinds of issues that seem to be left off of some of these applications. And again, I'm not picking on this person and the fact that there, we don't charge a fee for this, and there's a lot of work that has to be done by Jane or Jennifer or Carolyn for that matter. And I think we just need to, not necessarily tonight, but at some point, discuss a process that needs to be gone through so that everybody's on the same page with these applications. And as I understand, this one was brought in a couple of days ago and basically said, "Look, I gotta, I gotta have an answer on the 7th," which puts people into panic mode. "I gotta get this work done," and it just doesn't seem fair and right. So again, I just want to talk about that, and maybe Jane can explain the process for us, just so we are all on the same page.
But it looks like to me also, since you have brought it up, that this one venue seems to be changing what his intent was to begin with on a lot of different things. First, it was a food truck, and then it was an occasional brewing truck that was there. And then we have entertainment on some days. We also have car shows on several days during the week. I mean, there's a whole different variety of different things that are happening at this one location. And I'm not sure with all the licenses, do they cover it? I believe the planning board gave them an okay to be open later until 7:00 instead of 6:00, which was originally the plan at 6:00 o'clock, and then they extended it to 7:00 p.m.
And then this is till 8:00?
8:00 now?
They always serve, they're always open till 8:00.
8:00.
Right.
So now we want to be open until 8:00.
Yeah, I think what it seemed like was that there, and it's, I mean, this venue is probably the one that is doing license, but I think we ran into like another venue that just didn't have any licenses at all and was doing kind of whatever they wanted until somebody else spoke up and they got stopped by that. So I think there's a lot of businesses out there that want to do a lot more community involvement, and I think there's just a lot of, in my opinion, excess unnecessary paperwork and licenses for things like, you know, they just, for having somebody sitting there and playing guitar, it's like, oh, no, you gotta pay $100, you gotta do this, you gotta fill this paperwork, you gotta file it to here, you gotta go to there. So it just, in my opinion, I think there's a lot of silly excess paperwork involved with something that just seems so like small.
It is, and it's part of our bylaws that have jurisdiction over a lot of this that's happening, and that's why they end up having to do more than they should.
Yeah.
So if we can get to our new formed bylaw committee and have them take a look at it, and maybe going forward, because their season will be ending, of course, with, I hate to say the word, snow flying or whatever is happening in colder weather, that, you know, it's not going to be, you know, able to have all of these functions coming up. So maybe for the coming year, we could have something else more concrete of how to apply for these and have them plan out their year a little bit better on what kind of functions that they want to have for the year. I don't think they should be coming back to us every time we have a board meeting asking for licensing or extensions or granting one-day, two-day liquor licenses. UMass comes to us at the beginning of their season and has given us now all of this, their dates that they're going to have now that they know when their home games are going to be, when that schedule is set. So that's how we get these in front of us for theirs, and they include all of them, whether it be at one end of the field or the other end of the field, they have to apply for both. So maybe something could happen again with these other venues that are, I'm not saying I'm not up to stop anybody's livelihood and what they can do, but maybe we can just streamline it a little bit better so that they're not having to come back all the time.
Since this is the first year for that, because I mean, UMass has been doing this for years. I mean, this is a learning curve on, on the smaller businesses in town.
Yeah, I think, you know, and when Joyce, Joyce and I were on the board together before, I remember Jennifer and David came forward, this actually was a streamlining of a, of a process. We used to be sitting here, and there would be objections from the fire chief or somebody. So they streamlined it, so they, all of those approvals had to happen first before they came to the board. And so I think this is just a continuous improvement. Now we have other venues coming in, and they have maybe different issues than we had before.
Thank you, Jane.
So that makes sense.
I'd just like to say, Amy, that I can provide you all the Mass General laws, many of these are state-run licenses. We don't have a lot of control over that. So we can try to, kind of, you know, from convict lawyers to alcohol licensing to Sunday entertainment licenses to the town court, those are all through the state. So that might have to be addressed on the state level, but they've done it in place for...
No, I'm sure that they have. I just think this is a lot of job security for some people that doesn't need to exist, in my opinion.
Some of it's mandated for their positions to do the inspections.
Well, no, no, no. I just meant, it just seems like a lot of excess stuff, like if, you know, people are busy that, you know, I don't know. I don't really know how to explain it, but it just seems like a lot of excess paperwork for people that have other things to do.
Yeah.
Not necessarily for the owner, but like for you or someone else in the town office, you know? It just seems like a lot.
Future gender, as I said, the bylaw committee could take a look at it, too, and to see how we could...
And at the state level, the legislative delegation can put it on their radar. Maybe they're already looking at it.
Yeah.
What did you say, Jane, about the, the one-day, this is a, it's supposed to be a special event license, or is, does it have a name?
Yeah, the special one-day licenses are not going to run a business from. They are literally for special events. So that might be fair, that might be, you know, and you, you know, an entity, a person can have up to 30 special events per year. So a lot of times you'll see them in communities in summers or, you know, seasonally, you know, for October, you know, or spring, you know, crap, there's all these sorts of things. So special one-days are meant to be for events. So generally, you know, the Select Board as a license commission can ask, "What's the event? How many people are you expecting?" And, and that kind of happens in the town offices, and we try to share that information so that if they need a detailed officer to run traffic, or if they need, you know, part of issues looked at, you know, we can try to facilitate those things for them so they don't get stuck on the date of opening until, hey, hold on a minute, you can't do this. So there are those things that, you know, can be... So also with special one-day license, the alcohol has to be purchased through a state-certified location. So if it's a farmer brewery, they can provide it, but there is quite a listing of vendors that are approved by the state commercially for the sale of it. You can't just go to the package store and buy it. You know, it has to be, it's very regulated through the state, through the ACC.
So do we have any concerns about this particular one as we're sitting here right now that have been brought up?
Something the license commission can ask, based on the venue, you can ask if you're looking at a venue that's, you know, a public venue that a lot of people are coming to, do you want the alcohol licensing to have, have it recorded off, wrote off so that people who are entering their carton before they enter where they purchase, as opposed to kids, you know, here and then entering over there? That's pretty common. The ACC, you know, can give you guidelines on that about how to, how to handle that. You know, some, some cities and towns have actually asked for tents beside them to be provided and seating area in a room section for people that consume alcohol only in that area and not take it out for most where it's dependent on venue. Yeah, if you look at the venue and what's going to be there, who's going to be there, what ground, you know, and...
Well, certainly it's something for us to think about because now we've come into the college time of the year where the college kids may be interested in attending some of these venues. So, you know, maybe it is up to us to take a look at the licensing and how they are distributing their alcohol. Do they have an area where people have to stay to drink? An identification process, who looks at the IDs and all of that? I think that needs to be brought forward to us.
Yeah, and I think a lot of times, you know, our job is to protect our businesses. And a lot of times they don't understand the liability that they're taking on. And so, you know, to come to us, sit down and talk, and we can guide them, you know, in the town offices as to how to make it safe for them.
So should we have this person come in?
I don't think it's necessary. It's on private property, though. Like, it's not like it's a public one where you just have, like, people, you know what I mean?
But it's still there. We're issuing them a license, so it's on us.
So if the public is attending it, even if it's on a private property, it's still mandated by law that, that the public has a reasonable right to expect to be safe on that basis. So it's almost like when you get a special one-day, it's similar to a full-blown alcohol license for apprenticeship location, and, and that's why it's governed that way for safety.
Have we had any issues with, in the past?
Adver...
They haven't done this in the past where they've had so many pop-ups of the brewery at, at this location, and I don't know of any other place in town that it has. Does anybody else?
No. And I'm just wondering, we don't have any sign-offs from the fire chief, police chief.
I did receive, before I left, building and police a sign-off, not fire. So if voted for the contingent on, for all of the licenses, contingent on the fire department's sign-off, chief said.
Okay. You know, I, I think, again, I think, you know, I certainly don't have a problem issuing them right now, but, and again, with the sign-off from, from the fire chief. But I think that's something that the bylaw committee certainly needs to take a look at in venues and what, what really needs to take place.
Yeah, I agree with that. I mean, they, we've allowed them to do this for so many days this year already. And so I don't, I think it wouldn't be fair and reasonable to deny them at this point, but I think for next year, like you said, Joyce, we need to come up with a policy, not only for this, but for lots of things that are happening in town where permits are required that everybody knows the rules and everybody deals with who they're supposed to deal with. So that said, I'll make a motion to approve this this evening.
And then also tightening up applications just so that people aren't giving it two days before and expecting it?
Correct.
Right.
The next meeting?
Yeah.
On the next, most venues require applications two months in advance so that they can fit them in to get everybody on the offices for rolling.
Right. We, we do have that, if you can remember, during our bigger, bigger events throughout last year, we had last-minute requests, so it's, it's definitely an issue.
Well, and there's no reason that we can't charge a late fee.
Yeah, there's a, and I think, we've, we've actually been talking about a lot, especially like after the Asparagus Festival, when you had two large events, the impact of that. So there are, that is definitely getting addressed with the bylaw committee. That's kind of the catalyst, actually, is because we don't know what's, what to enforce, what's not, what's been allowed. I would, I just want to say on behalf of those departments who are doing the inspections, those, those are safety inspections. So those, those permits, those licenses are for safety. It's not for anything that's in excess of getting more money from the owner or anything like that.
No, and I, I think that's what we're looking like, actually, that maybe at this point, if we tell people ahead of time that we expect them to send their, set up their venues for the following year and to have something more concrete for us and not the last minute, I think they, they should be able to do that, knowing forward what they've done this year and what's come about. They could possibly set up more times of what they can do.
And we've had those meetings, we had after those events, we had meetings with those larger venues.
Well, this seems to be a weekly thing, so this is something that we probably would need to include them in also.
So, yep, so I, I think you, you can enforce that of how much warning, but to be prepared when you get the phone call on your cell phone about something not being approved, that we just be consistent.
Yes, exactly.
Yep. So that, is that a motion, Randy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. DPW Director Appointment, we will delay that until another meeting. Hadley Media Goals. Alex, would you like to present your goals this evening?
Sure. Um, wait. (laughing). Evening everyone, how's everyone doing today?
Very well, thank you.
Good. So it's not me presenting you with goals, more or less me grabbing goals from you, the Select Board, to see what the Select Board wants from the department. And we can also talk about, a little bit about what I've been doing this past month, too, if you'd like, also.
Okay, we're gonna limit this...
I'm seeing all over the community page.
You've been putting yourself out there, and you've been doing a great job. So I mean, if anybody wants to share, we're not going to go into an extended. If you want us to set up some goals for you of what we expect, we could do that. You could tell us what your expectations are of your job and what you feel is viable and what you can do for us at this point. You know all the meetings that you have to do or people expect to see, so, you know, we could go from there and, you know, then come back to you with what goals we might have for you. We thought we were getting goals from you tonight, so if you want goals from us, tell us what you, did you have?
Oh, no, I had a goal for you.
Uh-oh.
Like, one of the biggest complaints I get is how much people hate the website.
Which website?
The Hadley website.
It's not, it's not under...
It's not under you?
It's not me.
Oh, dang.
But, but to that...
Zing.
It has to be a future agenda item.
Yeah. It's, yeah, man.
Not easy to navigate.
Make your own, oh my gosh, people hate that it's not easy to navigate, it's...
Well, and Amy, the goal I was thinking of, I think we'll delve into, into your thought process. One of the things that the Select Board identified at one of our earlier meetings was the town coming up with a really a communication plan, a communication program. And it makes sense to me that that isn't one individual that that would fall to. So the website is absolutely huge on that list, but also our social media presence, transparency of covering as many meetings as possible, which falls to Hadley Media. But I would love if we get to the point where there's some sort of a committee formed to come up with a communication plan that you would participate in that.
So it, to my understanding, there was a Hadley Media Advisory Board, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It's defunct.
And that, that disbanded, I believe. Is that, is that something we could try to revive at some point?
Good.
We can, because actually, in other comments over the community page this, this weekend when people were not liking Spectrum, and I know that Spectrum is coming up for a renewal of its contracts, which would include Hadley Media, so which you would be a part of also. So we're going to have to somehow rejuvenate some people to at least look at what's our options in doing the contract. It took us some time to get the contract we have with Spectrum, two or three years that we had to...
Yes, so we, we are actually probably a little behind right now.
Yeah.
That needs to get...
Started.
...pulled together immediately.
Yeah. So people want to know what their options are, or if not, what is Spectrum going to do for us? So those are the things also that are on the...
We just spent 14 grand to get Spectrum onto Mill Valley Road.
Correct, but that doesn't mean that even with another communications that it still wouldn't be there because the lines are there. So, I mean, that was the problem, is that there weren't no lines there. So there are lines there now, but we only have two in the area. We have Comcast and we have Spectrum. Those are the only two.
Then the complaints are equal across the board.
Yes, they are.
If you have Comcast, you wish you had somebody different. If you have Spectrum, you wish you had somebody different.
Right. Correct. There's affinity up in...
Does anybody, anybody have any idea how the town gets its own cable company, like South Hadley did?
So South Hadley's not cable. South Hadley is just purely internet.
Oh, okay.
Levered as to...
Through their electric-like department. They don't have, they go through Comcast for cable.
Okay.
So you're asking whether it makes sense for us to resurrect the Hadley Media Advisory Committee?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm fine with that. It's been a while.
We're overdue, so I guess it's time. So if you could put on, Hadley Media, that we are looking for people to join a...
Advisory committee.
Advisory committee for our cable internet.
And I think it also, part of, part of the challenge we had before was there was not a clear charge.
Direction.
Direction from the Select Board as to the role of that advisory committee. So there was a lot of...
Right.
Swing of hair and gnashing of teeth for a while, so we want clarity on that. And maybe that's something that you could help us by looking at how it's written currently. And then we also should define who would be on that committee. I believe previously there was, I was the liaison from the Select Board, and there were three community members, and I don't, I don't think there was any criteria, per se. There were, you know, people who were interested in the programming.
So would that be the Cable Advisory Committee and not the Hadley Media Advisory Committee then? But there, there's two.
Yeah, I was looking for clarification on that as well, because you do have a cable advisory committee in place right now. Just hasn't done anything since last year.
Would they want to take on the role of the other?
Well, it's two different charges. You could, but I think you'd have to reach out to those members to see.
Yeah, we could do that also.
Okay.
Right. And I think where we landed is that the role of the advisory committee was to help Hadley Media primarily with programming in terms of determining what the town is looking for, helping survey residents, et cetera.
Yeah.
As opposed to any sort of oversight. That was where we got into kind of a lot of back and forth where they were unclear for a while on what the role was.
So are you saying that you'd rather have just a helping role instead of an oversight role, or...
Oversight, meaning they're not, they would not be responsible for overseeing you as an employee.
Right.
Right. That clearly goes to...
Select Board.
Yeah, the town administrator and Select Board.
Mm-hmm.
But they would be helping come up with programming. So for example, you know, maybe they might say, gee, we don't want to stream some of these old black and white movies anymore. We think that people would rather see sports, sports from Hobson's Academy.
Right.
Right, that kind of thing, which you've done with Gramby.
Exactly.
And actually, that would be helpful.
Actually, we are in a process of, one, bringing in more, taking out some of the old, un-local programming and bringing in more local programming, whether it be in Hadley or around Western Mass, because there's a lot of programming that you can, we can use. For example, I aired the sheriff's forum from North Hampton. I garbed that from American Media and aired it on 192 a few times. I actually took our sheriff's profiles from Gramby that me and my staff did and brought them over here, because I share with the rest of the stations in Hampshire County. And everything, too, I have already been in contact with the schools. We're going to be starting sports next week, not this week. Sadly, I'm only one person, I can't do two games at once. And also, also going to make sure that these meetings are getting covered as a priority over sports, but sports will be starting to come and be extremely robust, so get ready for that.
You do have to throw in a couple of polka programs, though, for these people in town.
There will be polka.
Mandatory here, yeah.
There will be polka.
It's a mandatory thing in Hadley, so a few little polka things here and there would be great.
I'm from Palmer, so I know the whole polka thing.
Like a Sunday morning thing, you know, they would like to hear a little polka, so...
That could be done.
That would be good.
Polka on Sunday. I know there's polka throughout the week, but I think Sunday would be a better day for it.
Yeah, they usually have Sunday morning polka.
I'll be on the lookout for polka programs.
Yeah, sounds good.
Goal one.
Polka party.
So I think that's it for right now, and then we'll talk about, think about us amongst us and what we would like for the goals. But I think we've already come up with a few ideas and, you know, we could take off from there, and maybe in October we'll get back to what we could do.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Everything going well with you?
Absolutely, there have been a few surprises down the road, but I've been taking care of them, and I'll be meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow to take care of some things that have to be buttoned up, but otherwise, things are going smoothly.
Good.
Just so you know, when you say surprise and then mention Finance Committee in one sentence.
You've had a little issue with Planning Board last night.
Right, so, for whatever reason, we had the Stream Box, which I'm going to eventually phase out of our operations. For whatever reason, I couldn't, one, the thing was running slow, slower than our internet in the, in the, in my building. And, and for whatever reason, I just couldn't get anything to stream, it was taking a little while, it was, I was just better off just recording it, and it will be uploaded once I get back. But we're pretty much gonna do something like this, except without the audio board or the audio thing here. It should be a laptop, recording onto another laptop and streaming from there.
Okay.
So can I ask for clarification from the Board? You would like to revitalize the Advisory Committee? And at the same time, reach out to the Charter Review Committee to see if they would be interested in doing both?
Doing that, both.
Is that-
If they would like to. If they don't, then we could advertise for-
So if, if there is a general no, okay to move forward and put something on the website looking for that?
And we'd want to make sure they understood what the-
Yeah.
-role was of that other committee too, so that they know.
Yeah, which I probably need more, a little bit more detail on that other committee.
Okay.
So.
Do you have any takers yet for filling the position, or not yet?
Anything else yet?
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet.
Yeah, it's, it's a work in progress, but we're getting there.
Okay.
We put something on Handshake, I'm reaching, I'm reaching out to some of the area colleges, trying to get the word out, possibly visit the colleges to see if there's any interest and talk about it in person, try to get some resumes right on the spot.
An internship this year would be great on some people, I'm sure. Maybe.
I'd rather, I'd rather look for the person first, maybe the next school year, we can work on the internship.
Yeah, it's a little late for intern-
Sometimes that internship develops into the job.
Yeah, definitely.
Sometimes, you know, because I know of, I had a few lifeguards this year, and that's what their intent was, was to, you know, do their internship and then proceed into their job for the following year, so sometimes that does help too. So, we'll let you go at it, and just there, I was just checking in on that.
Yep, totally, and I'll let you guys know if anything comes up, and obviously, I believe that you have to approve of that person, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, sounds good, Alex, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Notice of hearing of 8 Pine Hill Road, we are, do not need to have one, that hearing has been canceled, the water bill has been paid. Move on to abatement of application for water and sewer bills, and-
I have to abstain from this discussion, this gentleman is my daughter's father-in-law.
Uh-oh. All right. And that is at 123 Russell Street for the following bills. And there were several that he is looking for abatements with.
Do we have a recommendation here, am I missing it?
I'm looking to also. Has there been, been one from the-
Either the Collector's-
Collector's Office? DPW?
I think Kim's on here as well.
Good evening, the DPW would recommend not giving an abatement. We have nev, we, he hasn't even reached out to us directly to come to the property and inspect the meter, see if we can find anything and/or possibly test it. There, there has been zero communication with us. I know the Collector's Office has reached out to them, and I believe the tenant did have a leak. I'd have to clarify that with the Collector's Office, either Kim or Sue, but we would recommend not giving an abatement.
So at this time, motion to abate, so this is dated back to 7/21. So the bills are 7/21 and then all of the ones for 22. So, do we want to wait for him to have contact with you? How do we want to proceed, or just not approve these right now? You don't find anything wrong with what's, what's in any of the abatements?
He said there could be a leak?
Well, we don't- A leak where? In the house?
In the house, a fixture or a toilet or something.
Okay.
And I believe that the Collector's Office-
Kim is on-
Did go out to the property, and I think there was some admission to a leak by the tenant or something, I'd have to clarify that with them.
Okay.
But the, the Water Department has not been requested to come to the property.
Kim, can you want to put Kim on? A little bit louder. Louder, louder, Kim? There we go. Can you give us any feedback on these abatements that are being asked for? Hello?
She's muted.
Oh, there she goes.
She's, she's down here, here.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, can you give us any feedback on the abatement requests that we're looking at right now?
Oh, sure, this is for 123 Russell Street?
Correct.
Or, okay. So, your reading that was performed, yes, in the very June, June 14th. A letter received at the file, which was really quick thereafter. I usually sort through, and if there's any readings that look like they're above or they're rolling out higher than average, this particular time, I actually sent out a letter to people to advise them that they may have an issue. The readership wasn't in high. One of those was 123 Russell. I actually literally told the business, and handed a letter to the tenant of, of the law, who is Hughie Bro, the gentleman I spoke with himself. And I dropped off the letter to advise them that the usage was significantly higher. They're higher than the last, which was also high. The tenant advised me at that time that he had a toilet that was running continuously from time to time, it would run for a period of time. So, so he did advise me that there was an issue, and that he had to revise again.
Kim, I'm sorry, it's unclear to me, so you spoke with the tenant, did the tenant make it clear that the landlord, the property owner, was aware of that as well?
Yes, yes, he told me that the landlord was aware that there was, that the toilet was having some type of issue, their platform was taken down, the toilet was running for a longer period of time. Not every time, but with spin from time to time. He did tell me that the landlord was aware that this was the situation. When the property owner came to the office to fill out the maintenance, I dropped off. I advised him at that time, and I still end up telling him, and then he had told me that there was a leak in the toilet, and that that could have been the cause of such a high Q. Then at that time, my impression was he advised me that there probably is something that I haven't ever seen. And if I remember correctly, I hear that there was a repair that had Q.
Okay. So, so the owner was aware?
And in the past, we haven't ordered an abatement where it's due to maintenance, repair effectively in the property.
Yeah, it seems like a business owner versus tenant issue, not really ours, so if he wants to pass it on to the tenant, that's his responsibility. And I move that we do not accept this.
Very-
Oh, second.
So, motion is to either abate or not to abate, and your motion is not to abate?
No.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks Kim.
Thank you, very happy for you.
Thank you.
Thanks Scott.
Lieutenant Cook, could we have your presence at the table?
Thank you. So you're gonna be sitting in, in that seat for a little bit.
That's all right.
A hot seat.
Hot seat, I didn't want to call it the hot seat, because it's, it's not really a hot seat.
Should've worn your shorts.
He was out on road duty today, let's see. So we have a resignation of a part-time police officer, you want to take that one first?
Certainly, Tom Shabbitt has worked in the capacity of a part-time, a full-time and a sergeant, a part-time, full-time officer and a sergeant. He went back to part-time, but now has another full-time job, and he felt that it was not fair to us to try to work his new full-time job and also retain his part-time employment. So, he has voluntarily stepped aside, and we thank him for his years of service.
Sadly, accept the resignation of Officer Shabbitt.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And thank you, Thomas Shabbitt, for your service, appreciate it. Wish you the best. We have a promotion of a dispatcher.
Yes, this is part of a, a increase to our staffing. The batch that we're gonna go through tonight is a, a batch, one batch of two. The first one that we're doing this evening in dispatch is a promotion from a part-time dispatcher to full-time. And Rachel Farren is that employee, she came to us as a certified 911 dispatcher with experience working for the Berkshire County Sheriff's Department, as well as the towns of Dalton and North Adams. She has been working for the Hadley Public Safety Department for the last two months as a part-time dispatcher, and has already helped fill several open shifts. We're looking forward to having Rachel come on board as a full-time dispatcher while she attends online school at STCC.
Perfect.
Motion to approve the promotion of Rachel Farren from part-time to full-time dispatcher.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Rachel.
And our second is a, a new hire, and this is essentially backfilling the part-time position just vacated by Rachel Farren's promotion to full-time. And we're bringing on Halia Wyman. She's a longtime Western Mass resident with a work history both in the fast-paced food service industry, as well in, as well as in a professional office environment. She's also gained valuable experience as a volunteer assisting the public, taking and directing calls and filing paperwork. And we are looking forward to having Halia as a member of our team as a part-time 911 dispatcher.
Mitch, what's, excuse me, Lieutenant, what's the training involved in this? When, like, bringing somebody on brand-new like that?
So, someone who's brand-new, she will have to attend a forty-hour basic telecommunicator course, and she'll also have to complete the, the 911 operator course, which is a two-day class. And then the training could, could be anywhere between four and six months on the job training.
Motion to accept the recommendation to hire Halia Wyman as a part-time dispatcher.
Second. Any further discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And Special Police Force to full-time officer?
And Harry Santiago joins us from the world of Zoom, and top right.
Oh, there he is. Hi, Harry.
Harry Santiago's name may look familiar to some of you, and it should. Harry came to us in 2018, and he was the first and the only person that the chief had ever sponsored through the Reserve Intermittent Police Academy. He quickly proved his worth and was promoted to full-time in 2019, and served honorably for three years. One thing you need to understand about Harry is that he is a family man. He stayed on the, stayed on the night shift with us so that he was always able to get to the sporting events and be with his family when they had finished work or school for the day. This is one of the reasons he felt it necessary to leave in 2021, when he was offered a job in Chicopee. He thought that it would give him even more time with his family and help his finances. But Harry misses coworkers, this town, and those he served. He left Chicopee and he reapplied to be a part-time officer with us. This full-time position opened, and he has convinced us that he is in it for the long run. He calls this place his second family, and we wouldn't have it any other way. Harry's character is unquestionable, and he is quite possibly the most polite, calm, and collected person we all have the honor of knowing. Based on this, I am recommending that Harry Santiago be hired to fill one of the two vacancies that we have for full-time police.
Perfect. I guess it says it all, that you want to come back to us, which I'm very happy about. We didn't like it when you left us, Harry, but we could understand your, your need to with family, so, any motion? Anything else anybody has to say?
No.
Gladly welcome Harry back into the Hadley fold. And make a motion to accept the promotion of Harry from special police officer to full-time police officer.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, welcome, Harry.
Welcome back.
Congrats, Harry.
See you on the streets.
Can we keep Mitch here?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let's just, let's just do, Mitch, you're gonna do the Police Lieutenant update job description, and then you're done with us for tonight.
Thank you.
Had a long day, sir.
That's all right. So, before you are two job descriptions for the Lieutenant in charge of Operations and the Lieutenant in charge of Administration. As part of the, as part of growing the department, we found it necessary to add another Lieutenant to the department, and our, you'll find in our neighboring departments where there are two second-in-commands, either lieutenants or captains, those roles are generally split into Lieutenant of Operation, the Commander of Operations and the Commander of Administration. So, that's, the only difference is that they are now broken into two parts, being the Operations and Administration, because there's just too much for, for one person to do. And with regards to the Administrative Lieutenant, those responsibilities would also include duties revolving around the post-administration, which is the police officer standards and training, as well as the accreditation manager duties as, as well.
So we just have one for the Lieutenant in charge of Operations?
Correct.
Now, correct.
Good.
Yes. He does this all. Basically. And does it very well.
Thank you.
But we appreciate it, but sometimes you're looking a little thin. So sometimes that, people do get stretched a little bit to the max, and that happens sometimes when you have a department that is small, and you try to, you know, do everybody's job, you know, or do everything that you're supposed to do, and sometimes it's, by the time you go home, and I, I've been there, having been a nurse, that sometimes when you go home at the end of the day, you hope that you were able to do everything that you were supposed to do, but sometimes you get home and you go, oh shit, I forgot to do something, you know, and, and that's how you feel sometimes, and, you know, you shouldn't have to feel that way, because you have a lot of things going on that sometimes just doesn't allow you to get things done, and it doesn't feel good at the end of the day, so I, I get it.
So, motion to accept that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think we're in the process of doing the Lieutenant, so this is why we've done these two separations.
That is correct, the, the process for Lieutenant is, has just begun, and the process for promotion to Sergeants is just wrapping up, and the last of the two hiring of full-time- And the last of the two hiring of full-time officers is part of this whole process to move and basically backfill from as a result of promotions.
Okay, so motion to accept the police lieutenant updated job description as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 There we go.
Thank you all.
Have a good night.
You too.
Have a safe drive home. All right, so we will step at one, and that will be promotion of seasonal DPW worker to full-time highway labor truck driver position at the DPW. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. We'd like to recommend Jesse Joe Hasmeyer to be promoted to full-time DPW staff. He is the brother of our truck driver laborer Jebadiah and brother-in-law of Wade Vandelowsky, so he's relatives, the two guys.
Family affair.
Yeah, it's a family affair. He came to us this summer after he graduated high school to fill, to help us out with our vacancy, with the sick outage and the retirement. We were having trouble at that point trying to find someone, and he was recruited by his family to try to come and work with us. And he has been working out very well. There is no problems with him. Gets along with everyone good, and he is learning very well. And even the other staff at DPW recommend having him stay aboard full-time. He is fitting in very well.
Nice.
And where's he in the licensing process, Scott? Does he?
He needs to get his licenses, but he already took the initiative to make appointments. So he is, he is doing good, and the CDL aspect, there's, there's a, we have an agreement with him with that, so it shouldn't be a problem, though, with him to get them. But he did, he was very proactive when he applied, and then we made him the offer. He immediately made appointments, and I'm very grateful of that, that he's showing a lot of initiative to move forward.
On that note, before we've hired people that needed licenses, we have usually given them a timeframe. So is there a certain timeframe on, on what we're expecting on first the CDL? Or what other licenses are you anticipating that he's going to need?
He's, he's, has a six-month probationary period, which he would have to require those licenses. We're looking for him to get his CDL first. It's a little more important that we're gonna be coming into the winter months, but he, like I said, he does have appointments, and the hydraulics license aspect is administered through the state, and there still is a backlog on that. So depending on how things work out with them, it's a waiting game, unfortunately, but the CDL aspect should be a lot more streamlined and smooth.
Because there's not a lot of classes around either for some of these other licenses that you need, correct?
No, the hydraulics license and stuff, we have a lot of different training material at our office for, he can read and go over and stuff in. Watching other people operate and do things is, you know, valuable to it also, so, which he has been doing.
Do I make a motion to accept the recommendation for the promotion of Jesse Johansmeyer? Is that how you say his last name?
Yes.
To full-time highway labor truck driver position with the DPW.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Amy.
Amy.
All right, bye you guys. You can go home. Hit the road.
They don't want them. Too exciting.
Unless you want to stay for, only a couple more things.
Yeah, sure, I'm gonna stop.
Carolyn, special town meeting dates?
Yes, special town meeting is scheduled for October 27th. It did come to my attention that it's also open house that night.
At the school?
At the school. So, a couple things. I might, I did my due diligence to see which, what alternative dates might be available, what is gonna work best as well for our clerk. So, my understanding is that you have had that happen at the same time in the past. Not the ideal situation. We certainly don't want to lose participants at town meeting. And the parking issue, I did talk with our chief spank navel about the parking. He can make that work that night. The only other option is November 3rd, but I still need to check that date. I was not able to check that date with the schools yet to see if there's any other conflict. I doubt there's a conflict, conflict like open, I'm sorry, about.
There's no basketball. There's none of that.
I can't say that. I don't think, there's nothing like that.
Basketball doesn't come till after Thanksgiving, so we're good on that.
Yeah, but open house.
It'll be too dark for soccer, so.
I do remember we had a conflict one year. We couldn't move it. And did the school department, did the superintendent, or whoever you spoke with have a concern?
No, because I think they, she, they also said that the only problem they felt was the parking, and of course you don't want to have that opportunity where you don't have a resident who can't attend. But usually it's, I think they're kind, it's rolling, they're coming in and out of there, so in some ways it might be an asset for the quorum. You know, it's hard to tell, but I really, I didn't want to make that judgment call.
What time does open house start? Do we know?
I think they start right at the same time. Well, you know, open house might be a little earlier.
I think it starts at like 6:00 or 6:10.
Okay, might be earlier.
They might be done by then.
Do you remember former moderator?
No, I was not party to that.
I was before him, too.
So I just wanted you to, you know, if you want me to look another option, I can't go sooner. That would be, I just don't have enough time.
My thought is to go a different night, just because of the parking, and I don't think we're going to have an issue with loss of participants that, because they're going to open house. Because typically, that's gonna be younger people going to open house that don't show up at town meeting. But that's just my, my opinion.
Well, let's see what the November 3rd availability is, number one.
Yeah.
And if it's not, or if something else is going on by whatever.
And what time?
But you want to make a motion to change it to November 3rd? If the, if the date's available?
What time are they doing it at?
Open house?
No, 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 the special meeting.
Seven.
Seven. Is it gonna go to like 11 o'clock like the last one?
I hope not.
I'll walk, I mean, I'll have to walk out if that's the case. Have to walk out if that's the case. Getting up at 4:30 in the morning.
So my only concern is, I'm trying to get the cobwebs off here, but I remember part of, part of the reason that we didn't change it last time was because it started bumping up on the tax, setting the tax rate and stuff. I think, I think there was a little bit of a concern about getting into November, so do we know that it's not a problem to go to November 3rd?
No, I checked with Dan. It's, it's a little bit more work for Jessica because you're, you're getting close to the primaries. So, it's not her favorite choice, but she, she will do it. But I, I felt like I needed to give you guys that option and make you aware of it. I didn't want you to be blindsided by thinking you had this huge quorum of 400 people pulled into the parking lot.
If we can get 100, we're lucky. I don't know, what is our, what have we got that would make people come?
You will have the resolution, the climate resolution, if that is going on as a non-binding question.
Well, Christ, that'll take us all night on that one.
And then you have, and I tried to kind of do an estimate based on what the capital requests were. Of course, we can't grant all of the capital requests. So you're looking at, you know, cleaning up prior-year bills and some other adjustments with the budget, and going through some capital and CPA.
I mean, I guess I don't, I don't really have a problem leaving it the same, only from the standpoint, unless things have changed dramatically, which they could have. Open house, typically you're picking up the first-year parents, right? I should say, parents of first-year students there.
Seventh graders.
So seventh graders, maybe ninth graders. And a lot of parents, they go initially, you know, certainly transfer students, maybe school choice kids coming in.
Touch base with the teachers.
Yeah, you know, and there actually was some advantage last time because some people did, you know, because you, when you go through open house, you drift through, you go to the different classrooms, and then.
Go to town meeting.
I think even Amy had commented on that. Certainly we did it outside at the soccer field, and we needed the quorum.
Yeah.
That's.
I mean, I don't, I don't mind keeping it for the 27th.
I don't, it's not a big deal. I was just concerned mostly with the parking, but to, to the point of being able to go grab people out in the hall if we're close to a quorum, yes, that's, that's a good thing, because that, the soccer field helped us have a meeting. Because without it, we wouldn't have gotten a quorum. So I'm fine if it stays the 27th.
Let's just keep it the 27th.
Thank you. That's helpful.
That was easy. Oh, there we go. Okay. Jane, prorating license fees?
Yes. We recently had a request for a license to be prorated automatic use, and they can get pretty costly when you have a lot of machines. So Fun Hub had requested a prorating, and so I'm bringing it to you. Generally, one of the guidelines for prorating, it's up to you to have a discussion or decide the value of it for our businesses. And if it's just for applicants who apply after July 1st, if it's for all applicants, if we're just gonna prorate half a year if they apply after July 1st, obviously not daily rates, don't know about quarterly rates, and is it per individual basis, or is it overall for any licensing comes in after July 1st?
I think it's always been by case by case on when they start up their business. What's the timeline on their license? Is it a certain one we're talking about? It's from now until December, so it's actually a quarter. You know, certainly something like that. And again, I think we've always done it on a case-by-case basis, whether it be water and sewer. We've done those, prorated them. We've done them on increments of paying, you know, but that doesn't fall in with licensing. That's a totally different issue, but.
Yeah, we want to be fair across the board.
Exactly.
Treat people equally.
So I mean, a case-by-case basis, but I think if someone applies for a license and it's in August or September, that certainly, that's something that we would be able to look at for prorating, I would say, wouldn't you?
Yeah, I would say we could look at it. I just don't know how finite we want to get with the prorating. You know, we definitely don't want to do it on a day, daily basis, so to Jane's point, do we go quarterly, a half-year, whatever? I don't know what the answer is.
Do we know what other municipalities are doing, Jane?
Overall, they tend to prorate, you know, just because some of the licenses are bigger. And if you get into like a business such as this, where they have an alcohol license and they have the other device licenses, it adds up pretty quickly for a new startup. So we tend to prorate fairly regularly, I think, overall.
You have prorated in the past since I've been here.
For sure, yeah.
I think we're looking for a little clarification.
How, how, what was the prorating? Was it quart, by quarter, by half?
It depended on when they came in and asked for it.
Monthly.
No, it definitely wasn't monthly.
It would be like six months.
Yeah.
Mostly it's a six-month one.
Yeah, I don't remember doing a quarter, but it, we may have if it was, like Jane's saying, something that was really expensive. But typically, it's been a, I think, a half.
Or just starting up their business now, where you would only have this many months to have a license and then turn around and pay for the whole license again in January, or the end of December for the next year.
Right.
So that would be something to look at.
So are they asking, are you asking us to prorate this license tonight?
He's requesting, so, you know, then, you know, I'm asking, what is the standard that you set? Because often boards do set.
I would say that would be, I think we'd be able to prorate, since we want them to start up their business, we'd get more money if you start up a business than if you hold them off, you know, so you might as well help them out.
But we don't have an actual ask here.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so if, this is really discussion.
Discussion and decision, yeah.
Well, it's not listed on here as a specific business to be voted on tonight.
I think she wants to vote on a policy, not the.
But like, right, we can have a discussion and decision on what we want to do moving forward, but in the case of this specific business, it would have to go on the next agenda. Right. Yeah, I agree.
He's gonna go in by then, so. But the opening is coming week. In order to add some machines.
But it would have to, like, you'd have to have it on this because you have to have option for public comments, right? Is that how that works?
Not the licensing.
So.
We don't have to, but.
We don't have, we don't have comments by people on opening businesses. Usually the licensing is just within our purview.
I mean, I personally don't care. I just don't want any more issues with this board.
So if, if there was no need to prorate a license, the applicant would come to you, you would say it's X amount of dollars, pay the fee, they get the license, correct? So they don't have, not everybody has to come before the select board to get their license approved.
No.
So if, if I under.
Yeah, we approved this license.
But the fee, the fee, we don't, we don't approve the fee, right? So the way I look at this is Jane is asking us to make a policy that would allow her to prorate the licenses.
That, that's what I thought this was.
Okay.
Okay, so then that we can, I believe we can vote on, because that's what I see as being asked.
Okay.
But the specific applicant, has that been, was that part of the?
No.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
It's affected by the decision.
So essentially, we can make a decision tonight. It'll be a blanket one that moves forward, moving forward for everybody, so if they come to you after, we're covered for anybody.
But he's opening this week.
But we don't have to, would we have to vote on it if we vote on a blanket?
Well, his license.
No, we're just, we would give Jane the, the ability to prorate based on whatever we decide the formula is going to be.
So now I'm gonna go back to what Amy said before, because if it's really, this is, now we're affecting a, a process word policy. And it's just coming up for the first time, and we're kind of making it up on the fly with no information in front of us.
Okay.
So I'd rather vote on this request if we have to tonight, but then.
Is the information about this request, that business on here?
No, we don't have numbers or anything.
That you can't do.
Right.
When, so he's opening this week. Yeah, I was gonna see if you could pull together a phone call.
If he's on, you've already voted under the consent for him to increase from 26, to add six machines, basically. So he has current license for 270 machines to move his.
Oh, so he is on that?
He was on the consent agenda.
For the consent agenda.
Just to increase his licenses.
Not to address his.
A fee proration.
In the past, he hasn't made any policy to just, I guess, I think he's just done that.
So we approved his.
You've approved his, his request for increase. The prorating, is that based on that increase?
So his increase, I think, is gonna be about $600.
Is that what's, we would be, would this policy affect that?
Yes.
Yes.
Then you're fine. That was my original question. Is it, was it on the consent?
No, but I think he's asking for, as a whole, he's looking for a prorating for all of his licenses since he applied after July 1st.
No, he's already paid for his other list.
He's already paid.
This is just the addition of.
The additional one that he, that we did on the consent agenda.
During the consent? Yes, you're fine.
Okay, so.
So we're good.
So it's $600 would be the annual fee?
No, that's just for those six licenses.
But I mean, that's.
He's got 31 machines, times $100 a machine. And he'll have to come up again in December for this renewal, besides his alcohol license.
But he's already paid the 2,600.
And so he's not asking for 20, this 2,600 to be prorated?
No, just the next ones.
That's what I'm trying to figure out.
That doesn't make sense to me.
Doesn't make sense to me either.
Yeah, that's, he doubts his ask.
Well, because he didn't have the machines before, we just approved them tonight.
Correct.
So he's not even open, and he already paid after July 1st for his other stuff. So you think he'd be asking for all 31 machines?
No, he already paid it. He would have to. No, he already paid it. He would have to evade it.
Already paid. We can't, we can't change what he's already paid.
Okay.
But we can prorate the.
So.
The six hundred.
I'm okay with prorating the six hundred today, but I think that's a decision that we can make today on the fly, but when it comes to coming up with a policy for moving forward, I think that's something we should discuss.
Mm-hmm.
I think that.
For the future.
I, if, from my understanding, and, and I, I don't cross over to the licensing and all of that, but I think that was the request. Is that to look at moving forward, you know, i- is it case by case, or do you, are, is there, is there the will the select board to consider prorating licensing? Is that right?
As a standard.
As a standard.
Standard rules so that everybody's treated fairly across the board.
I'm all in favor of having a standard rule where everybody's treated fairly.
Correct.
That ends people having to consistently come in, which is what earlier.
Right.
More difficult for the.
Right.
Right.
I'm personally more in favor of a quarterly. Um, but that's just for me working on a business that's on the S and G five hundred. Everything's done quarterly in my world.
Yeah, I think monthly or daily is way too much. Um, and I'm fine with quarterly as, as well. But again, so, so for him tonight, then, so when does a quarter start, right? So, if we prorate, he'd be paying for two quarters?
Well, he got.
Or just one? Cause he's opening in October or September?
He's, he's opening in September.
September, October, November, December, four months.
And I just have one more question. Is it based on calendar year or fiscal year?
Calendar.
Calendar.
Calendar year.
January to December on the licenses.
Okay, just double check.
All licenses are, are that.
Just double checking?
Yeah.
Just wanna, in case anyone in the ether.
Get a phone call.
So.
Okay, motion on that at all?
Well, hang on. What, what were you saying now about how much you wanna, you wanna prorate this? Is that what you're saying? We, we want, we're voting to prorate this? And what is the formula we're using for this particular one?
So, that's what I'm saying. If we were, if we're really thinking quarterly is appropriate.
Yes.
Even if you fall into the thirtieth day of your.
Right.
You're picking up the whole quarter, so we would basically cut the six hundred and a half to three hundred.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
That's fine.
Okay. Motion?
Oh, sorry, motion, motion to, um, prorate the application, the fee for the application of the additional equipment. Um, from six hundred dollars to three hundred.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And we're out. All right, let's see. Town administrator, anything?
Ms. Klamoski.
Klamoski, oh, yes. Oh, I'm, I've gone down the path here. All right, so APR, Klamoski, co-hoster, approval form, certificate of approval for irrigation and well, Cemetery Road. Um, documentation. So, who's gonna speak on this?
So, I can, are you Ray?
Uh, no.
No, okay. Is Ray, okay, so let me, I'll just, I'll, I'll do this explanation. Um, this is, so, M D A R and Hadley are co-hosters of the K T Klamoski APR. And they are requesting, um, in order for them to, uh, put a well in for irrigation, it, the, the, the co-hosters have to approve of it. So, this is a request for Hadley to approve of that. Um, so I wanted that discussion to come up. I don't know if there's anyone here to talk. Um, Ray, who was the requister, was gonna be on, but I don't see him on there. Um, so this also, um, is gonna go before Conservation and the Health Department. They need more time to take a look at it, but I was hoping.
I can see where the Conservation Commission was because it abuts the Connecticut River.
It doesn't abut the Connecticut River. This is right on Cemetery Road, Joyce. This is, this is, uh, the corner of West Street and Cemetery Road. Uh, where the greenhouse is on the left-hand side, right across from the cemetery, I believe, is what I'm looking at here. And if I remember correctly, Klamoski bought that property.
Well, Klamoski sold it.
Yeah, but I mean, that's when, when he put it in APR, so I'm pretty sure that's the piece that we're looking at.
It's behind the house on the corner of West Street.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, there, it doesn't abut the river. They're asking to allow us to let them, or, we're asking us to allow them to dig a well, or.
Why would the Board of Health be involved in that?
If it's for irrigation, it would be non-potable water anyway, non-potable water.
Well.
Why would the Board of?
Scott had something to say about that earlier, so what, what did you say about that, Scott, as to why the Board of Health would be involved?
I can see why Conservation is.
Just, in, in some areas, the Board of Health gets involved because there is potential for people to drink that water, period, even though it's non-potable, someone could drink it. And it's a penetration into the aquifer and there, there could be septic in the area that could leach into the well. There's multiple factors involved. In some areas, the Board of Health does get involved with making the decision on this for the best interest of the stakeholders, which is the Water Commission, I guess, in our, protecting our aquifer. It's just, it's just another point of concern. Anytime, anytime you put a penetration into the earth, into the aquifer, there's potential for contamination.
And our health agent, um, he's from the Boston area, so, um, he has not dealt with this before.
Geez, what a surprise.
So, he just needed a little more time, so.
They get all the quab and risk.
Yeah, and we may find that there is no, that you, that you are correct, that there is no involvement, but I think based on these concerns, we wanted to cross all the Ts, so.
So, what do we need to do to, tonight?
So, I was hoping Ray would be here. I had spoken with him earlier and he was, so I hope he didn't have trouble getting on or anything like that. But, um, I think what, we'll, we'll wait to hear from Conservation and, uh, Board of Health, and then hopefully Ray will can be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
If you would like, if, if that's what you would like. I mean, you certainly can make a motion to, to accept it or to be, to, to agree with signing on, but if you want more information.
I think it makes sense to wait. He's not gonna be irrigating anymore this season. It's definitely gonna be for next year, so I think it makes sense to wait and get some more information.
We were concerned, Randy, too, cause it, it did say in his spec, it was a little deeper than just a normal.
Yeah, I see that.
Shell irrigation wall, so there was, there was some concern, uh, from myself and, uh, Tony Horton that runs the water plant. We just wanted to make sure that we weren't allowing something that maybe we should not.
Okay.
Okay, let's wait then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Move to, move to, um.
Sure, I have to further discussion.
Table it for, for the discussion, another meeting.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, now, town administrator, do you have anything for us this evening?
I do, I do. I first wanna let you know that the, um, uh, early voting went well and elections went well. Um, special kudos to our clerk, to, for Jessica. Um, I, I, it's, early voting is a tremendous amount of extra work and Jessica made that happen and it was a tough, if you saw it today, she had very tired-looking eyes. It was a long, it's a lot. It's a lot. It's long hours and weekends and stuff like that, so I just wanna, a special recognition, recognition to our clerk, Jessica. Um, I also wanted to let you know that cap requests are in and, um, I will be, um, talking with Paul, um, to set up those Capitol, uh, Planning Committee meetings, to take a look at those requests. I also wanted to let you know, it's kind of, um, some two challenges, two challenges that you've actually heard some of it today, um, that we're, we're definitely having, um, is, one is, is hiring. Um, we are definitely having a problem. We have a position in wastewater that is a critical position that, uh, we are having difficulty hiring. There's a lot of competition out there and there's a lot of, it's almost like House Wars where the, the, the prices of houses are going up higher and higher. And we're just having that battle with communities. Um, all the communities around us are having trouble, so I just wanna, um, we've got some challenges ahead of us with, with hiring. Um, it's, you know, so, letting you know about that. And also, um, our procurement, again, it's happening in other communities. What we're, our original scope of work, when we're going out to bid, we think is gonna cover it. And it's, it's not covering it and we're off by, in some cases, twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Um, so that, we did have to, um, we're taking a look at trying to, uh, do, uh, fund a project. We'll be meeting with the Finance Committee tomorrow. Um, it was the, um, the sewer pump roof replacement. Those came in per, uh, higher than what we had estimated. So, um, I'm seeing this trend and I just wanted to make you guys aware of it, that, um, we're having to redo some, some, um, bidding and, um, procurement. And, um, we're trying to see how we can fund these projects, but I just wanted to give you guys a heads up of those two challenges that we're facing. Uh, we did have our kickoff meeting for the streetlight conversion. That is going to happen at the end of October for about four days, we think it's gonna take. Um, so that's gonna move forward, looking forward to those cost savings and our subsidy to be returned back, that will be returning back to ARPA. And, um, let's see, just an update on the connoisseur and move-ins seem to go well. Um, I, I know Tommy was out there. He is satisfied with some things that are happening there and, um, they are following up with some, some recommendations from our, you know, departments that do inspections there. So, it seems to, this is the fir- first full weekend, so that they'll be here, so it seems to be going well. So, I think that is it. Yep.
Okay. Uh, select board members, items for future discussions. So, there's a few that we're going to have for future. And if you have anything else to add, um, certainly chime in when I finish. Uh, we have the Chumera Road trailhead issues. Um, and we have some issues out that end of the town with parking, um, and other things, so we're going to put that on another agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Next, I would say, uh, the next agenda.
Next agenda. Um, we have Carolyn's evaluation. Um, looking at possibly doing a three sixty. Um, we, I was thinking that either you or Molly or Randy really hasn't had the opportunity to, uh, work alongside Carolyn since it's a short period of time then you've been elected. So, I think it would be unfair to do an actual evaluation of her, um, a full board. Um, the thought is to do a three sixty eval, which would make people that are, uh, working with her on an everyday basis, our H R Director, Police, our Fire, um, D P W. Everybody that she comes in contact to have a chime in on, um, how things are going at Town Hall and, and, and go that route. And then in six months, we may be able to do another evaluation on our end of it. Um, just a thought that we could still have a future discussion on that, too, to see what you think about it.
Yeah, and the other thing I, I thought about after, um, it came up at a previous meeting when we were talking about it and we were talking about, you know, if Carolyn hasn't presented goals, how do you evaluate her? Because in the past, we would evaluate people on goals, but then I went back and I, I looked at just the town administrator job description that you were hired for.
Right.
So, I think that's, you know, probably a good starting point until we have, you know, more personalized goals from the Carolyn going forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, wouldn't that make sense to be like for key accountabilities, they're writing the job description?
And I think we thought that after town meeting, she would have a better opportunity to give us her goals and what to expect within the next six months and then give us, let us have that opportunity to do evaluate at that time.
Mm-hmm.
Does that sound good?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, thank you.
So, that's a thing and certainly we don't wanna make that decision without Jane being here, um, since she brought up the evaluation, so.
Right.
Um, to discuss it at, you know, at the future meeting on that. Would that be okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Aye.
Okay. Um, just, um, use of town property, um, and, uh, evaluating that. And we don't really have a bylaw or policy per se on the use of it by residents, um, town employees or any of the officials. So, we wanna have maybe the bylaw committee take a look at that and see what, you know, we need to get, get something in place on, on that aspect of it, too. So, that again is for a future topic. Um, and then anything else for our agenda? Would anybody else have anything that we should be discussing down the road?
Um, I think at the last meeting, we brought up, or I brought up that property.
Yep, that's the twenty-first.
The twenty-first, okay, so that's gonna be on there. Um, and then tonight, just the follow-up items from tonight in terms of the, um, proration.
Prorate.
Of fees.
And the permit process.
Yep, and the procurement, or for the, um, licensing process, so, yep.
Okay.
So, help me with that. What, what can I provide for you to help you guys out with that discussion?
The licensing?
Yeah.
Well, I think, um, kind of the way it transpired in the past, uh, cause I think I alluded to the fact that there, you know, there was a streamlining that was presented to us, um, several years ago. Which was based on kind of the stumbling blocks. So, at that time, uh, the town administrator and, uh, the licensing coordinator brought a proposal to the select board. Saying, based on these pitfalls, um, we got together with building inspector, police, fire, in particular, D P W. Um, and they, they themselves came up with recommendations and then that came to us and that's how this kind of sign-off sheet came into being.
Mm-hmm.
So, from my standpoint, cause I mean, we're not in the weeds all day long and like Randy alluded to the fact that there were some, you know, concerns that get brought up on that Tuesday meeting. Um, maybe Jane could go back, uh, knowing what she knows now about things that don't go smoothly and then that can come back.
And I think added on to that is I will be meeting with Ben, uh, the Health Inspector. Um, we're, we're gonna try to, we tried today and it didn't work out, but we're gonna try next week. He has, he has experience in that and I know that Shila Conservation has also been in, in, you know, wanting to be involved with that. But he wants to get together and, you know, pick Jane's brain, pick all the department heads who are involved and to look at templates that they've used on what the process has been. Um, cause I do, I think it's a great idea, especially publicly to share that because I think people think it just, somebody puts an application in and it gets on the board docs. And so many steps happen and always challenges and always bumps, so I think it's, I think it's excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah, Ben was concerned yesterday about, let's have a checklist. You know, for this particular item, you need to go see da-da-da, 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 da-da-da. X, 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 X. Or no X in that box, no license.
Right, I just, yeah, I think what, when people see a, a piece of paper they have to fill out, that the expectations are different than what the reality ends up being. And I think that it would take a lot of stress off people if it was more out there. Like, this is what you need to do. This is the realistic timeline, so don't hand this in. Well, it's like, well, don't hand this in and then expect it in a couple of days, or maybe educate new business owners or something, hey, if they're looking to do this, this is what you need to do. And, yeah.
And that usually starts actually when they come in and, um, talk to the building inspector in, in that department and asking what they need to do if they're in the process of, uh, opening a new business or, um. And they usually give them the direction, well, you've gotta do the planning.
Yes, Dee Dee does do that.
You know, so they have a certain pattern that they give everybody when they come in, so I mean, they've already streamlined that herself and they can actually do it on the web, um, actually, to, to get their things straight.
Right, but sometimes opening a new business, you're extremely overwhelmed. It's like a college graduate signing up for health benefits, right?
It's a good analogy.
That they needed or not.
Can confirm.
Absolutely. All right, anything else under that? We're good? Okay.
I can, I can illuminate you that I, I have done this in another community. I've helped to gather people together very well and your departments are on board. They've already tried, you know, they're trying very hard to, and that's what Project Meeting is for, so it helps a lot. Problems to be on one page. Um, but I, I have kind of with Ben created a list of, you know, of how to, you know, who goes where, when and why, and it can be put on a website.
Yeah, I mean, just cause you guys are busy already, so that was my main thing earlier is that it just, expectations, reality and, and being overwhelmed and having a lot going on. Um, so, anyway, that's all I got.
Sounds good. Um, we're gonna, it, does anybody have any liaison reports tonight from, from their departments?
This is a new section for us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Inspection?
This is a new section for us.
I can go quickly.
Okay.
So, two things, so I'm the liaison to the Town Financial Man- Financial Management Team, yeah. So I actually attended the first, for the first time, the Financial Management Team meeting, so that was good, I like the reports have been revamped a bit, they're kind of one-stop shopping, nice summary schedules now, that are being presented. I'm not gonna get into the financials, but just, you know, that, that was a good start, and the plan is to attend those, not every single one, but once a month, along with Amy, from the Finance Committee. And then for the University, we started the negotiations for the Annual Community Agreement, which is different from the separate issue with the Econo Lodge, so Carolyn is taking point on the Econo Lodge, and at that Financial Management Team meeting, we discussed kind of initial ask for her to go back to the University with, so. Let her give us an update on that when the time comes. And then, in terms of the other, again, it was just a kickoff meeting, but I think you know, we may have the opportunity to do something a little bit different than we've done in the past, financially, so. I think the University's in better shape, and as part of that, typically what we do is reach out to department heads that we know are impacted, so I think the more information we can get from Police, from Fire, DPW, Board of Health, you know, anybody that feels that there's been an increase in workload, or additional tasks and activities, that, you know, the Town is absorbing at this point, it would go a long way for us to be able to present that to them. This might be a good year to do it, so, that's all I have to say there.
Randy?
Carolyn mentioned earlier about Capital Planning Committee, I'm the liaison there, and hopefully we're gonna start meeting very soon, and just go over some things, that's all I've got.
Anything for you, Amy?
I know that the, they're looking at doing that climate change, September 22nd?
Yes.
As a public hearing?
Yes.
So you're gonna moderate?
They're gonna have a venue.
Yeah, the venues here, from what I understand, their, their meeting is tomorrow night,
their monthly meeting, whatever, is tomorrow night here, and they're going to discuss that information forum, which is scheduled for the 22nd, and I believe it's here.
Okay. The Russell School, I had some members drop off, a few of them, and-
Drop off, meaning?
Leave.
Oh.
Because you're such a taskmaster.
Yeah, I think there's two members that have quit so far.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
Any particular reason?
Um, I think one individual was looking at trying to make it more of like an art exhibit, and didn't really wanna be part of the, um-
I think it may help, and that might be in the future, you know, I think we need to clarify the charge for that committee, that might be helpful.
And I think it would be good for maybe to sit in on a meeting, if you have the time.
Me?
Yeah, just looking for money and, and doing rein inspections and quotes-
And that's where I think the charge, and I think, let's put this on the next, let's put this on the 21st, so I, I do have some suggestions, I think we do need to do a specific charge, and what the expectations are from the Select Board, so.
Yeah, because everyone, like, I went to the first meeting, and everyone had, you know, wonderful intentions, but it was, there was a lot of directions.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which means they don't have a clear direction.
Yeah, there was like, just a lot of-
So, let's put it on the 21st.
It was, I mean, it was good, and then I was in on a Zoom meeting, and, yeah. There's definitely passion, so I will say, I'll say that.
Alright, anything else?
That's all I got.
That's it.
What do you have?
Just an intro, after this, this gentleman probably should have spoke up at Public Comments, that he's having a craft fair.
A craft fair?
And he's got all of his ducks in a row, so he doesn't require your licensing structure to be approved by you, just to-
Sure, do you wanna speak now, before me, that's fine?
Oh, thanks for waiting.
Yeah, sorry, we, we didn't have executive session, so we kinda-
I just thought you were just a-
A bystander.
A curious person. Wanted to see the action here.
So, my name is Greg, and I own Barnout Back in Hadley, Massachusetts, which is a vintage and gift shop. I do sell prepackaged Greg's goodies, which is my other business, kind of a jack-of-all-trades. But this is kind of the culmination of my, my whole life's work, with, you know, working in retail, going to culinary school, all of it. So, basically, I wanna take it to the next level, now that this is our third year, I'd love to do a craft event with ten vendors, keeping it very small, in my side field. I have plenty of room for that, I did go through the planning boards, so they saw what I was doing. And I also have someone that's an ex-state trooper, that's a friend of mine, that will be running the parking situation. And she runs it for the Deerfield Craft Fair, which is much bigger than what I'm expecting. But it's something that I just think that would be great. I'd be doing it for October 2nd, which is a Sunday, and from 10 to 5. And basically, the vendors that will be there will be clothing, and there's one person from a floral shop, there's a jewelry guy that I know, and I'm still working on that, so.
Okay, cool. Sounds great, and the location is?
Is 30 Lawrence Plain Road in Hadley.
Plain Road?
Yeah, Lawrence Plain Road.
Okay, 31.
So-
It's the Barnout Back. When you drive by, there's a Barnout Back.
Yeah, it's, it's my barn behind my house.
Sorry.
Next to Tony Sabascas?
Yeah, yeah, that's my cousin.
Okay, Tony's your cousin?
It's before Adair.
Okay.
Correct.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so Jane, you say he, he needs no other permits, he's good to go?
Yeah, yeah, he's been to the other departments, and he doesn't have anything that you need to approve, but he's coming here to let me know if he does have.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for having your stuff together.
I try.
Well, good luck, and maybe we have to stop by.
Thank you, yeah, come on, come on by and check it out.
Sounds great, yeah, well, good luck.
I almost stopped, because I saw you were waiting.
I know, I did, and I'm saying, I'll have them for the event, so.
Hey, you have one customer coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
I do, I have, I have nothing to report from the School Department, they're up and running.
That's a good thing.
It's a good thing. But we have nothing to report for tonight. The Police Department already gave their report for tonight with Police and Dispatch, so we're, we're good in that area. The Fire Department, we have, the ambulance has arrived from Northampton, and we wanna give a big thank you to Northampton for finally getting it here. And they also included the auto stretcher, which is a big-money thing for them to, to give us also, and that was included in the ambulance, so that was also a nice gift from Northampton, so thank you to Northampton. They're gonna be going over a lot of details and things, and looking at the ambulance, and seeing what needs to get done, so this is just the start of it.
Could be a few months.
It'll be a few months, for sure. We are in the process of hiring a full-time paramedic firefighter. We had interviews, and we're in the process of now waiting for the necessary paperwork, and approvals and things, all going forward with this person, so that's, will be brought up at another meeting. Who this is, Ambulance Committee, Molly was named the Chairperson of that committee. The calls are up, and things are looking good in that area.
Well, yeah.
I mean, more or less, I mean, it's, you know, seeing that we have an ambulance that we wanna get, that we wanna get into use, it's a, it's a good thing that the, the calls are, are there to possibly, and hopefully, support it, so down the road.
Do the numbers go up over the weekend, Mitch? Yeah.
Yeah, well, now with everything back into full swing, we'll see how that goes, correct? And I did have two, that's all I have for the liaison committees, does anybody have any?
9/11?
I was gonna do that, too.
That's what I was hoping, okay.
Oh, so 9/11, there will be a ceremony at the North Hadley Subfire Station on Sun, uh, nine, um, 9/11, and it'll be, the start will be at 9:45, so everyone is invited to attend, and be at the ceremony if they wish to. Also on Sunday is Chicken to Go for the Legion. Not sure what tickets are available at this point, there's a 12 o'clock and 4:30 setting for tickets, so there, I'm sure there are some members out there to get, get their tickets. And then I did have two condolences this evening, did anybody else have anything else? No? We had the passing of Joan Weinsek. She and her husband owned Weinsek Excavating Company on River Drive, and the sons own it now. Certainly a big family person here in town for a number of years, so our condolences to her family. And then we had Gary Fidenkevich that passed away last week, condolences to Brenda and his daughter Megan. He was also the co-owner of Split Excavating in Megan Valley, and also was a co-founder of the Motorcycle Club, Chapter 132, the Freedom Cruiser Riders, and he was big, he was one of the original persons that started that club here in town, so our condolences to his family. And that's all I have.
The only other thing that I forgot to share was, we do have a star chef at the Senior Center, is that tomorrow? S R H R Manager Jen will be cooking.
Whoa.
Remember where she comes from?
What, what are you cooking?
What are you cooking tomorrow?
It's the lunchbox, senior lunch, what they do lunch in, usually Susan does it, and she's a maid.
You're it, nice. That you're actually doing a flair of something for tomorrow, no?
That's it.
That's it?
Yep.
Alright, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Who made the motion?
No. Motion to adjourn.
Alright.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.